I'd like to call this March 23rd, 2023 Board of Education Regular Meeting to order. George, can you take the roll?
Mrs. Mrs. Housen?
Here.
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane? Not here. Mr. Miko?
Here.
And Ms. Stovcek?
Here.
All present, or four present and one not present.
Thank you. We could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda are district goals. Our district goals remain financial prudence, academic achievement and growth, and community engagement. An example of academic achievement and growth and community engagement that took place this past week at Strongsville Middle School. They hosted their third annual Polaris Palooza, a middle school robotics competition where over ninety eighth graders representing five local school districts, Brooklyn, Fairview Park, North Olmsted, Olmsted Falls, and Strongsville faced off in hands-on events and competition. There was a fast-paced mad grab challenge that allowed participants to design and program their robots anonymously to scoop as many balls as possible while competing in an action-packed arena setting. Middle school teams also tested their dragster car designs in the long-distance runway challenge. All the students had the opportunity to test exciting new technology with drones and student-made robotic games in the Innovation Nation Arena area. Congratulations to SMS eighth graders Violet Karim, Jocelyn Koschel for placing second out of sixteen teams in the mad grab event, and to Damian Jelenanovic, Serena Mathi, and Miranda Breeden for placing third overall in the Dragster Challenge. Members of the Strongsville High School STEM stangs were also at the event assisting with judging and instructing. This was a great showcase of what the students have learned in their middle school project lead the way the STEM classes through practical hands-on learning opportunities. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Reiba for recognitions.
Thank you, Ms. Housen. We do have a number of exciting recognitions tonight. We're going to kick it off with Ms. Stovcek, who will start with the OSBA Student Achievement Recognition for this month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening today, or today. This month, we visited Maraski Elementary School for our Student Achievement Extra Mile Award. Is Ms. Emma Northheim here? Come on up. Yes. So, in the words of Mr. Griffin, Emma Northheim, kindergarten teacher at Maraski, no staff member at Maraski is more deserving of the extra mile award than Ms. Northheim. She is an absolute rock star in the classroom. Ms. Northheim has gone above and beyond to create meaningful learning experiences for her students because she is intentional in what she teaches, innovative in how she teaches it, and enthusiastic in the way she teaches. She cares about her students' well-being, making it a point to emphasize the model Mustang and pride in our school, but also researches and implements best practices, implementing the science of reading as well as strategies that promote critical thinking, problem-solving, and writing with our youngest learners. It doesn't stop there. Where Emma is a leader in our building. She is quick to adopt new initiatives, collaborates with all members of the staff, and does all of this with a positive attitude and outlook that is contagious at Maraski. She is so deserving because she truly goes the extra mile. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Sai Rohith Nandhalila here? Come on up. You look very handsome today. So Sai is a fifth grader, and Sai is the definition of a model Mustang at Maraski. He's an incredible student, determined to do his best each and every day, collaborating with classmates to truly impact the classroom. Most recently, he was one of three fifth graders in the area to be recognized with the Elks Annual Community Award for his writing. Not only is he a great student, he is also a great leader. He is a member of our student council, always conducting himself with integrity in our building. He also helps our younger students on a daily basis where he provides guidance and support for our kindergarten students who need help in some of our unstructured times. Sai has a positive attitude about education and works so hard to make Maraski a better place. Because of him, we get a little bit better each and every day. Do you have anything to share about your writing that you did for the Elks Club?
Nope.
No? Man, a few words, but good words, huh? Very good.
Sai and Ms. Northheim, if you could come, come up and, hey Sai, if you can come on up with Ms. Northheim. Just like to shake your hand and say congratulations.
And when we went to Maraski in Ms. Northheim's class, it was actually snack time. And they all broke away from their snacks to raise their hands and all give reasons of why Ms. Northheim was the best and amazing. And she allows them to eat oranges, and she can peel their oranges for them, and she makes learning fun. And all of Sai's classmates were not the least bit surprised that he was picked for the award. Once they figured out what it was, they all agreed, you know, yes, he definitely was the one that deserved to get that, and they were all very, very proud of him. So, thank you for everything both of you do for Maraski and the Strongsville City Schools, and we really appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Stovcek. Another round of applause for our outstanding recognitions this morning. From the elementary school to the high school, I'm going to bring up Mr. Wengler, our high school principal, to share and celebrate some of our outstanding young students and young men and young women at the high school.
Congratulations to the other winners, but now apparently we're shifting to an all-high school night here. We're dominating the room. So, my part tonight is just to speak very briefly about the National Merit Scholarship process. We have some students tonight being honored. I will start with the commended students. And before I call them up, every year I try to explain a little bit what this actually means. National Merit bases this off of testing, and in order to qualify, you have, you take the PSAT test during your junior year. And roughly 1.5 million people in the country, children, juniors, take the test. Of those 1.5 million, they sifted out about 50,000 of the best. And of those 50,000, they go through those and come up with roughly around 34,000, and the number changes. It's not an exact number. So, in order to be a commended student, which means although you are not moving on to become a finalist for National Merit, you are eligible for other special scholarships. But for our purposes, the really important part is the kids I'm about to call up, the students, are in the top 2.1% in the country. So, we're going to honor their achievement, and I will call them up. So, when I call you up, please stay up together because I want to get your picture together. Gabrielle Griffiths, come on up. Gabrielle. Gabrielle Griffiths. Jennifer Wen. Last but not least, Charles Parsons. So, we are very proud of you guys. You have, you have very, very high achievers and represent many high-achieving students that we have at Strongsville High School. Good job. Okay, from there, we move, they take those 34,000 students, and they begin to narrow it down into semifinalists. We do not have any semifinalists, but the good news is we have some finalists. So, once you get about 16,000 or so semifinalists, they go even further down. We end up in really the top 11,000 to 14,000. The number is fluid. It's not always the same. But the bottom line, same thing with commended, these are students who qualified for the National Merit finalist. They're in the top 0.8% in the country. So, I just want to go back to that. 1.5 million juniors took this test. The kids that were just up here were in the top 34,000. The next three I'm going to call up are in the top 11,000 to 12,000, which is always, you know, I'm getting to that time of year where I get to have all of these award ceremonies for academics. It just exemplifies the amazing students, academics, and parents that we have in this community. So, I'm going to call them up one at a time. First off, Bhavya Anoop. Avery Scullen. Raina Senha. It's Rhina, not Raina. I want to get that right. Again, these are top, top eight, 0.8% in the country. Another round of applause, please.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Grimm. I'm a speech-language pathologist in the district, and I'm also the coach of the Strongsville High School Dance Team. This team is made up of twenty highly-trained and skilled dancers. It's been in existence at SHS for over 20 years, and I've been the coach of it for the last six years. In these last six years, this team has developed a lot, from solely performing at just home basketball games to now also competing in regional competitions and the state championship. So, this year, the team qualified for states in all four categories that they entered. And at the state championship, they were named state first runner-up for lyrical, state second runner-up for pom, sixth in the state for hip-hop, and sixth in the state for jazz, as well as receiving a nomination for best choreography, which was especially cool because this dance, hip-hop, was actually student-choreographed by two of our students on our team. So, senior and captain Kelly Cunningham and junior Katie Sanic choreographed this and received that nomination at states. These dancers have worked very hard for these achievements. They've devoted time to dance team all year long. So, they started learning choreography actually in the summer, and they had skills training as well in the summer. They practiced in the fall and winter, and then they had performances all the way into this month. So, while doing all this, they remained really strong in the areas of academics and extracurriculars. So, I'm very proud to say that the weighted GPA of this team is 4.2, with 15 of these dancers achieving over a 4.0. And this academic excellence is especially astounding considering that the majority of the dancers on this team trained for 20 hours per week or more in dance, and they're also actively involved in National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, Key Club, Dare Role Models, Honors Choirs, Cheerleading Track, et cetera, lots and lots of things. So, I'm very honored to work with this incredible team. I also want to thank the board for recognizing these accomplishments as well as supporting our program. So, I will announce them one by one, and then girls, if you want to come stand up here by me, just kind of make a line. So, Briar Amalong. Natalie Arselenian. Kira Callaway. Bryn Conlin. Annalisa Crowder. Kelly Cunningham. Abby Dews. Maddie Gorman. Ella Grabey. Peyton Coffold. Leanna Cravick. Olivia Maseko. Maddie Morris. Lauren Pettisani. Joelle Rush. Katie Sanic. Kylie Sanic. Megan Schuff. Lizzie Stutter. And Zoe Tran. Thank you. Sure. You want to take a picture? Just try to get as close together as you can. Go ahead up and shake their hands.
Congratulations. That's awesome. Good work. You guys are pretty cool. Congratulations. Congratulations. Nice work. So good. I've watched you guys perform awesome. Congratulations. Good performance as a group.
That was like the fastest group that ever went through this line up here, man. Well, I do have to say, we are, we are so proud of, you know, Emma and Sai, our student of the, of the month here, our merit, commended students and our finalists in our dance team. What an outstanding night to celebrate kids from around our district. To the dance team, I want to share with you, I've seen you perform at different things and basketball games and things of that nature, but I had the chance at Founder's Day recently. They performed, it just blew me away. I mean, the talent that you have and how you've come together, as you said, Mackenzie, as a group. It was just phenomenal and made me extremely proud that we're able to provide these opportunities for our kids to express themselves in whatever way that they possibly need to, whether it's through music, art, dance, athletics. And so, thank you to the board. We've had, as Mackenzie said, for a long time, we've had these programs available, but it's officially recognized and supported financially by the school district now. And to all of our high school students, our three commended and three finalists, just so proud of what you've done. You know, it's not just about this one test, this one point in time. This is an educational career worth of work to get you to this point, to be in the top of the top students. And so, that, that's from a great school district and teachers and support staff and administrators, but it starts at home as well with, with a family that supports you. So, just want to let you know as well that all of the hard work that led up to this score on the test, that got you into this place, does not go unnoticed, and we appreciate how well you're representing our, our school district. So, congratulations to you and all of our recognitions this evening. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Sai.
Thank you, Dr. Reiba, and congratulations again to all of our students here. Like, just to reiterate what Dr. Reiba said, you guys make me so proud, not only just to be a board member, but to be, you know, a parent in our district and have my three children go through here. There's, there's a lot to be proud of, especially here in this room tonight, so thank you. With that, we will move on to public comment. And this is a great opportunity if anyone needs to, has homework to do or dance class to get to. George, she has a public comment.
Did you fill out a slip?
I'm going to go ahead and start with the green slip that I have. Just when you're done, just bring that one up. Bonnie? If you'd like to approach the podium, state your name and your address. And again, you have about approximately three minutes.
Okay, my name is Byssenis. I live in 947 Brushwood Lane, Strongsville. Well, I took the advice and I'm just going to take one thing at a time, so. And I'm sorry, I apologize for last time. I get very nervous, so with time probably I'll get better. I try not to accelerate like the jet engine. Today, I would like really to talk about the kindergarten versus the full-time versus the, versus the half-time and what I've noticed. I really didn't know that something like that existed until just recently. After I looked at the information and I looked at the data, because I, I do get interested in the data on the, on the, you know, the Ohio School Report Card, and I'm really looking into it. So, I provided some printouts and I provided some information that I, I just noticed that if you look at the first page, you see that Strongsville up to 2015 and 16 was kind of keeping up almost with Solon. And Solon is kind of considered a very good high, I mean, district. And you see that the indexes are in hundreds. And then I figured out what, what really happened after that, and there's the yellow. So, then I realized that, that full-time and versus the half-time kindergarten was implemented. Now, based on what you're saying on the website and what some others say, it says that both the full and half-day kindergarten program offer premier education for students and prepare them well for the first grade. The content and skills thought are the same in both programs. However, the full-day program allows for additional time to provide deeper interaction with the content as well as more individual enrichment and intervention to students, okay? So, that's not really equal education, and we talking about quite a few students. I calculated it's a one-third of the students that attend half-day. And it could be a financial reason because it is expensive. It's $2,200 for just those three hours to make up for the three additional hours, plus the after-school program is $3,600. So, the people that can afford that, the people that are well-to-do, they've sent the kids and their kids are flourishing. But what about the other, you know, one-third of the kids? And you see it, that if you see it, you turn the pages, what I've noticed that, you see that it's 2015, we had 24% kindergarten not on track, and prior to that, we had like 21 number. We're not talking about percentage-wise. And then we, we not getting any better, meaning going all the way to 21 now. We have 42%. And we have, we still have a half-day kindergarten. Now, that's very expensive. I would say a full kindergarten should be for all. Look, the reason why I speak like that, because I came from the family where my father was alcoholic. My mother, we started very well, but then after three years, my father started drinking and my mother had to go to work. Me and my brother and my sister, we were nine, seven, and six, and we had to take care of ourselves because my mother worked the second. Now, don't forget, I wasn't a student. And it's not that against being a student, but I had good teachers and I had a brother. Thank goodness I had a brother, older brother that was going to school, and I got interested because he brought books from school. So, I wanted somebody to learn from. But there are many kids that don't have that opportunity, and this school doesn't provide that. And to just provide for the people that are well-to-do, it's really doesn't, doesn't do a good. It's 42% right now. And then, that, that's, that's too high. I mean, that's really high. And then, and then, this is, this is how it was compared full-time by the person that is in a staff. What, describe, what is the difference between full-time kindergarten versus half-time? That's 2014. It's as though with the half-day program, you get your meal, meat and potatoes. You get the basics. With the full-day program, you are getting a little extra meat and potatoes, plus you get a side that said, whatever. I'm not going to mention the name of the person, but that's a big difference. We talking, and so, so when you look at it, it's very expensive, and it should be provided. We talking, and so when you look at it, it's very expensive and it should be provided. Kindergarten should be provided, because that's the time that the children need to catch up with other children. And just to say that you provided the same education, it's not true. I would rather put out the money and have everybody catch up before they get to a first grade. This is not fair. It's one-third of the kids right now, over 120-some kids, that don't get that. And maybe parents don't have the ability to, you know, to pay. I didn't have it when my son was in a preschool. I couldn't even afford a preschool when I was here. But, you know, but he did pretty good. He did the honors and all that. But I'm saying, there has to be a way for these children to catch up. We can't just leave them like this and we forgetting them, and it's not right. Now, we can find money for gifted, you know, 700, 7,000. I mean, we don't have to educate. Based on the Ohio law, we can, we don't have to educate gifted, but we do. So, gifted are the result of the kindergarten kids that, that's the number one, that we should invest the money in, in the kindergarten. That comes after. The gifted or the smart kids, like I did, they take care of themselves. They are smart enough, they find a way. But these kids that need some guidance because their parents, either they not educated or they don't have the means, or they have to work full-time and they get home at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock, and they don't even have the time to spend. And everybody says, well, it's a parent's responsibility. Well, you know, it was my mother's responsibility, but the circumstances did not allow it. And there are many people these days, and we see what we're getting now in a society. We should be taking care of it before it gets too far. So, and then, then this overcrowding, that's another reason probably. So, we have reasons like overcrowding now. If you look at it, I printed for you. Now, you take an example of, you know, Kenzer Elementary, without sixth graders, it used to be 626. Now, we're talking 646, and there's not even a sixth grader. And Whitney School, Whitney School has 450, and used to be in 2004, used to be only 380. So, my thing is that you should work, I mean, this district should provide a free kindergarten for all. And regardless, you should find the money somewhere, because money is there. VPG by itself, I mentioned. VPG, I printed a page for you, okay? Over the last, since 2013 after the strike, it's $1.9 million that the school district paid VPG, and that's VPG something that teachers don't work anymore. It's like a bonus for something they did 20, 15 years ago. And that is not right. So, I'm sorry, I get a little bit emotional, but I'm speaking up for the people that don't have the means and for the children that really could flourish, that they could do well like I did. And I had very good teachers, thank goodness to that, and I had a brother, but many of them don't. So, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next, Nora Bacon. Could approach the podium, state your name and your address, and you have approximately three minutes.
Hello, my name is Nora Bacon. I live at 16899 Drake Road, and I am currently a senior at Strongsville High School. To start, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to speak today, because this issue is extremely important to me. And to preface, I want to say that what I'm about to talk about doesn't apply to school sports, theater, or music-related activities at Strongsville High School, but that it does apply to academic extracurriculars. It solely relates to these academic extracurriculars, because students take part in activities that build skills for higher education, such as public speaking, researching, lab experience, or seminar experience. Specifically, my presence here today came about last summer as I realized that extracurriculars I had done for the last four years in high school, specifically the ones in the English and Social Studies Departments, were slowly going away. They had stopped existing, teachers had stopped posting them. And I asked staff members, I asked administration, I said, where are these going? What's happening to them? And every single time, my questions were met with the same answer, is that the teachers weren't being paid for the hours of commitment, both labor-intensive, time-intensive, and mentally-intensive, that they were putting into the activity. It's realistic to say that teachers are also people and that they have lives as well, and that they have children or dependents, and that their commitment to students can really truly only go so far. And that's mainly why I'm here today. I consider this speech to be a project from the top down, and it focuses mainly on staff rather than students, because you can push student involvement in extracurriculars as far as it can go with initiatives and incentives and reward programming, but you can't stop staff members from not participating in time-heavy extracurriculars because their lives aren't conducive to it. Additionally, I'm a high school senior. I'm in the middle of my college search. I've applied to several selective colleges. Acceptance rates in these colleges are dropping. They've been dropping steadily for the last 20 years, and tuition is going up, which means that it is harder for students to get into college and also harder for students to pay for college, which means they're looking for more scholarships. These academic extracurriculars allow students to demonstrate a higher level of proficiency in a skill area that's more visible and more applicable to college admissions and scholarship committees. Having a certain amount of these activities available at Strongsville High School and making them guaranteed makes it easier for students to gain these skills and use them later for getting into a college or achieving a scholarship. Lastly, these extracurriculars offer a career simulated environment within a safe environment for students to participate in. A criminal justice class is great for somebody who's super interested in law, but participating in mock trial allows somebody to simulate what it would be like to be a lawyer. And especially in humanities, I think at the high school, it would allow people to figure out how they would like to spend the rest of their lives in an environment that is not one constrained by grades or maybe a commitment to a higher GPA. To use personal example, I intend to go to school for political science, and that wasn't because of a high school class. It was because of my participation in our school's National History Day program that made me realize what I wanted to do with the rest of my life. The availability, the flexibility, and the allowance of these activities to let students do what they want without pressure from their parents or from extraneous sources to get good grades or maintain a GPA average, while allowing them to do things with other students from other schools that they might not ever get, makes these extremely important activities and something that is very necessary to succeed in higher education. I compel the board to consider ways to compensate staff for these extracurricular activities and their participation in advising them, to ensure that they do not permanently cease to exist. Additionally, I urge the board to consider that Strongsville High School does offer an extremely competitive and extremely diverse learning environment, and that solving this issue would be a very small but an extremely invaluable thing to students like me and the students that will come after me, and also the staff. I think it would help students and staff alike. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora.
So, I just want to say, Bonnie, thank you for your comments. I appreciate the time and energy and thought that you put into that. And I think that topic of full-day kindergarten for all students is something that is something that we have been discussing and will continue to discuss. And you listed some of the challenges that we have right now, but I appreciate what you put together. Nora, correct? Just phenomenal job, right? Thank you so much for putting the time and energy and thought into it, and I agree with you. I think what we have to do is we have to look at, we have so many opportunities at the high school, right? We can't fund them all. And so, that's a part, you know, we've taken a look at, you know, music and athletics and the arts, and we've kind of spent some time building each of these programs as we go. And what you've mentioned is something that is on our minds as we move forward, of looking at some of these programs that are labor-intensive, right? And are so meaningful to our students. And so, that's something I think we talked about a couple of years ago, is the non-academic piece. And now, we're in a spot where we can start having that conversation. What I would ask, are these your student supporters over here? If Mr. Wengler can work with you, and I'd like to come over to the high school and talk with you, and any fellow students you would like to talk with? And we can kind of see where your thoughts are, and I can bring that back and share that with the board. Mr. Wengler, did you have something?
Nora and I have met quite a few times initially already to discuss. Nora's actually been meeting with Tom and I on ways to be creative with high school schedule and duty periods for during the day club activities. She has blown me away with the same conversation, I think at least like four, three, four times. And she has a lot of really good ideas. I think you coming over and me discussing, it would be great for all of us to do that.
Yeah, so I think when you're ready to, there's things that Mr. Wengler, as the high school principal, has the authority to make decisions on, some of the things you just mentioned. And there's some things that are decisions that are district level. So, when you feel you're at a point right now, where you're a point where you can provide that recommendation and kind of plan, then let Mr. Wengler know, and I'll come by and we can sit down and talk, okay? Thank you.
Great. Next on the agenda is our approval of minutes. Everyone should have received a copy of those. Motion to approve regular Board of Education meeting minutes from February 23rd, 2023. All district video and audio recordings will be a permanent part of the minutes. Next, George, financial report.
Sorry, technology.
Oh, you're good.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Education. I do have a slew of items for your consideration tonight. So, first is the financial report for the month ending of February 2023. And I'll go over the supplemental report as I usually do. It is attached to the agenda. So, how we're doing through February, current year, to date, revenue collections indicate a $759,574 favorable compared to the forecast, while expenditures are trending $245,000 over the forecast, which would net a potential $514,000 favorable point back to the five-year forecast from November, which would result in an ending year cash balance at June 30th of $69,000, $69.1 million. Revenues compared from actual revenues for February compared to February of last year. In the month of February, we receive our first half of the calendar year tax advance. It's our largest tax advance for the calendar year. So, local taxes represent $24.4 million that were collected through February. Compared to last year, they're $479,000 down. We do receive our settlement, our final collections during March. We did receive it last week, and we will be higher compared to the forecast. The reason why February was down was the due date for tax collections was extended by the county. State revenues, they're $713,000 higher compared to, or no, sorry, they're $248,000 higher compared to last month. And then, overall, for the month, we're $105,000 less compared to last February. Year-to-date, comparing July through February of this year compared to last year, overall, we're $236,000 less. It's due portion of the local taxes that were collected year-to-date. And then also the state foundation revenue, the way it was distributed last year. It's $463,000 less this year, but by the end of the year, it'll be slightly higher compared to last year. And then, how it's trending compared to the forecast from November, it's about $759,000 higher. And that is made up of state aid, which was an increase of $223,000, which was additional aid that was added to transportation in January. And then also, in December, we had a series of payment in lieu of taxes that were settled between the board and other property owners. Any questions on revenue?
On a related, unrelated note, what is our current interest, average interest rate for our investments?
The Star Ohio rate?
Yeah.
It is close to, it's about 4.8%.
Okay.
Right now, so we're getting a good return, and I think the Fed was taking action either yesterday or they're upcoming to.
A quarter percent basis points.
Yeah, so it's going to increase again, and that is, Mr. Miko, one of the reasons, so far, year-to-date, we're $110,000 over the forecast on interest, and expect it to go more every month.
Are we investing anything? I know when Star Ohio was paying 0.008, we were investing in other safe tools that were a little bit more.
Right.
Is everything in Star Ohio now? Or do we still spread it out?
We still have it spread out. We're trying, we're locking in some of these rates as well. As if the rates go down, we still have laddered investments.
But 4% is a conservative number?
The 4.8% right now is in Star. So, right now, so this is our meter portfolio.
Mm-hmm.
Our estimated annual return is about $711,000. And the way we have it spread out is 28% of it is in a one-year bucket, and then 23% of one to two and two to three. So, as they were, as maturities come due, we try and reinvest it into a longer range so we can capitalize on some of these current interest rates down the road.
So, right now, our average is actually 1.7%?
Correct. It's because some of these were locked prior before the rate going up. So, as they're maturing, we'll reap the gains down the road for this. So, through February, we had about $46,000 in Star and $46,000,000 in Star and $40 million with meter invested.
Okay.
And part of it is, we received the large cash advance in February as well, which got moved immediately to Star. But I do think this month, from what I saw earlier in the month, I think we might hit $200,000 in interest for this month alone, for March. So, we'll see. It's been a good investment. Any other questions on revenues? Expenditures, actual expenditures through February compared to last February. For this February, total expenditures were about $6 million in comparison to last February of $5.8 million, which is about $131,000 higher. And year-to-date, July through February this year compared to last year, we're about $3.4 million higher in annual expenses. And then, in comparison to the forecast, we're about $245,000 more. Salaries and benefits is under, but other expenses increased this month. From the, later on in my section of the agenda, there'll be a transfer, but it's related to the board approving the track upgrades at the last meeting, which at this meeting, we'll need to approve the transfer. So, that wasn't part of the original five-year forecast. And then, overall, we have 67% of the month completed and eight months plus four estimated months. So, continue to update and report each month. Any questions? And then, going back, forgot a comment I wanted to make. Going back to Mr. Miko's question on the interest, I do want to say we don't have anything invested with Silicon Valley Bank or the other banks. I checked immediately, and as it's in our portfolio with meter, as they invest for us. So, I checked to see what banks they have in, and that wasn't one of the banks or the other bank that was mentioned. The second item on the agenda that I have is setting up, be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that a petty cash fund be established for use in Strongsville Middle School in the amount of $100, and that Hallie Malloy, the secretary, is named the trustee. Invoice order approval, be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that according to ORC, the after-the-fact invoices, the board approves the following invoice repayment, and the treasurer be authorized to sign the fiscal certificate. Both of these were related to emergencies that occurred that we needed to have the work done prior to being able to get the PO in place. Item four, House Bill 9, Public Records Training. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the Board of Education accepts the certified hours for House Bill 9, Public Ohio Records Training. The training is in compliance with all Ohio Public Records statutes and Board of Education requirement that the treasurer, George and Ignosu, be the designee on behalf of the Board of Education for Public Records Training. This public records training was held virtually on Friday, February 24th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 12:15 PM, and presented by the Office of Dave Yost, Ohio Attorney General. We do have one grant approval. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the following grant be approved for fiscal year '23, and it's a middle school step-outside grant by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Just if you recall, but I don't think you guys were board members yet. So back in about five years ago, five or six years ago, P E teacher Jeff Martinelli had applied for a larger grant through the Ohio Natural Resources Department for archery equipment that he was able to buy, the, the bows, the arrows, the targets that is used during P E classes. And then every year, he applies for this grant to replenish the aerial, the arrows that are associated with the program. Item six, new fund for fiscal year twenty-three. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the following new fund be approved for fiscal year twenty-three. Fund two hundred, Special Cost Center ninety-nine oh five, for the Red Cl- Red Cross Club for Strongsville High School. And then item seven is in relation to this. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the following student activity program budget, purpose, and goals for fiscal year twenty-three be approved, and the amount seven hundred dollars for the Strongsville Red, Red Cross Club. And then we have two student activity program budget revisions. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the following student activity program budget revisions for fiscal year twenty-three be approved. Strongsville High School Derby increased from twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars to forty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars due to anticipated sales and related expenses. And then Strongsville High School Boys Volleyball Club from three thousand dol- from three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and all funds and expenses will be fundraised. And as I mentioned during my report, the transfer of funds, be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that a transfer of five hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars from the general fund to the permanent improvement fund be approved for the track replacement. And lastly, recommendation, the F Y twenty-three amended permanent appropriations. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the amended appropriations for fiscal year twenty-three be approved, and the changes for those is increasing the permanent improvement fund by five hundred and sixty-five thousand, five sixty-two for the track replacement, and then the, the three student activity accounts. Those are the revisions. And with that, that concludes my report for now. I have a second item later down the agenda.
Any questions for George? All right. Thank you, George.
Thanks.
Dr. Ila.
Hey, Ms. Hausen, we have a presentation tonight to discuss elementary space challenges and considerations. So what we want to talk about tonight is the challenge we can talk about a little bit. I introduced it at the State of the Schools about our elementary space needs moving forward. So again, just a reminder that this is a part of-
Thank you. This is a part of the thirty-year facilities plan that the Board Facilities Development Committee put together a handful of years ago. And in this range of two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-five, there were two things that they said we should be doing. First of all, they said we should be doing an enrollment analysis. We've done that last spring. We've shared that, and, and we'll talk a little bit more about that moving forward. It said we should examine elementary boundary adjustments, which we'll talk about that today as well, as well as consider the construction renovation, a bond project, to look at our elementary schools. So a couple of months ago, we talked, and the board shared consensus that, hey, yes, we do need to move forward in discussing our elementary facilities. We targeted that May two thousand and twenty-four ballpark area that we would prepare a bond project. And as we go into this, if we would have support for that bond project in two thousand and twenty-four, in the spring of twenty-four, that would mean buildings could be open in the fall of twenty-seven. So we just need to keep that in mind as we move forward. So taking a look at that enrollment, I think, I, I've shared these, the, the statistics in the past, but from a district level, and these are just from an elementary perspective, since that's what we're talking about tonight. So as you can see, ten years ago, we kind of reached our peak of elementary enrollment at that time and started to decline over the next four years. And then starting in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, we leveled off a little bit. And then the last four years, we've seen our elementary enrollment kick up, right? It's, it's taken a, a significant jump. The two thousand and twenty-one school year, that was COVID, so that was kind of a little outlier. But you could see from eighteen nineteen to nineteen twenty, we went up by a hundred and some kids, and then that pattern continued moving on. And our current enrollment, as of a few weeks ago, at the elementary level, was two thousand four hundred and ten students. And so when we take a look at what that looks like in our schools right now, and I, I've shared kind of portions of this in the past, we look at our five elementary schools and the capacity that they have. That capacity is a mathematical equation. That's how many classrooms do we have that could fit a full class, multiply that by twenty-five, and there's some other factors obviously in there, because it's not all ending in zero or five. So there's other, other factors in there. But on average, for our capacity, we could fit a, a little over nineteen hundred students in our elementary school. Our current enrollment is listed there of the two hundred, two thousand four hundred and ten students. And so you could see the delta as to where we are over that suggested capacity limit. Again, we have some class sizes in fourth and fifth grade that we allow to get up to thirty. We try to keep our, our K to three at twenty-five. Sometimes when we have to make the choice of, do we have that child go to a different school other than their homeschool or stay? We, we choose to stay, and some of them are twenty-sixes. But, you know, right now, everybody has a classroom, but things are tight. We've talked about that, and if you watched my State of the Schools or watched the video, you, you got a lot of examples. You were shown a lot of examples of, of what that impact is at the building level. We talked about, okay, you know, possibly we could, with the support of the community, have new buildings open in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And at that time, we would have enrollment of over twenty-six hundred students. So that's adding, as you could see, another couple hundred students to the mix. And that is actually, if we take a look at that, that's the peak of our enrollment. So if we look at the next ten years, we see that we continue to have some increases at the elementary level. It levels out a little bit at that twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and then kind of hunkers around that two thousand six hundred student range. So we're not done growing yet at the elementary level, and we're gonna see that before we level off a little bit in the next few years. So we have to be planning, you know, what are we going to do as a bridge to, between now and, and when we have new buildings to support the, and continue the premier educational experience we provide for our, our students? So I wanted to talk a little bit about, hey, right, as we think about next year. Jenny's already working on staffing for next year and the number of sections. When I talk about sections, that means how many third-grade classes are we gonna have at Surar or Whitney and so on and so forth? So what changes are, I wanted to culminate for you, what changes we're seeing right now based on, I'm, thank you. I've got too many things. I'm clicking. Thank you for letting me know. So we've got, we, we've, we've mapped out right now where we're at as to what those would be. So the bold tells you at Chapman, we are going to add one section at the building and, and possibly two. And the, the non-bold text tells you why that is. So as you could see here at Chapman, right now, we're projecting to add a first grade and a fifth grade class, and possibly our preschool is growing. We're gonna need another classroom. Because of licensing standards, we don't want to go to a third location. So it's either at Lund Road Preschool, which is full, or adding one at Chapman. And then we have a, a section of fourth grade that's currently in place that's no longer needed next year. So that's how you get to the, definitely one, possibly two. And I won't go through the details for the rest of them, but for the, the non-bold text. But we're, next year, right now, we're slated to add a section at Kinzner. You can see the kind of, the plus and minus there. Maraski and Surar, there's gonna be no changes in sections right now needed. And then at Whitney, we are actually gonna reduce a section. We'll have one less section there than we did this year. As we take a look at this, and, and that's what the green text box is saying at the bottom, is across the district, if we look at first grade in total, we have room across the district in every grade level. The challenge is, is kids not being able to attend their homeschool. So there are a couple of grade levels across the district, and that's what the green box is, is there, is, hey, we've got plenty of buffer. We've got across the district. It's different per grade level. But it ranges, just to give you a ballpark, right now, third grade has thirty available seats across the district. Fourth grade has a hundred and one available seats across the district. Because if you look at a class size of thirty, most of them are in the twenty-two to twenty-five range. Some of them are higher. But that's why you see the difference. We have plenty of seats, but the challenge that causes is we never want to tell a family that moves here in the spring or the summer, hey, I know you bought a house in Surar neighborhood, but we have no room in, at Surar Elementary, so you're gonna have to go to Building X for at least a, a year. So we have plenty of room, but things will be getting tighter as the spring and summer go on as, as families enroll. The other thing I want to share with you is, okay, we took a look at, we have space challenges. What are options that we have available for us to address this starting next year? And then kind of using this structure as a decision point moving forward. So the first option is, we don't do anything. We, we live through the space challenges that we have, because we do have room for all of our classrooms. You know, every K to five classroom has a room right now. But one of the things that I wanted to share is that first column says, what are the current and prioritized challenges? So that's, that's looking at this year. There's a lot of current challenges right now, but I tried to prioritize them to say, hey, at Chapman Elementary School, the media center, and you'll hear this theme at all the buildings, the media center is being utilized for small group space. Title One services are being in there, used in there. Bannon Orchestra is on the stage. So if we don't do anything, that's kind of the starting point right there. But we already said, right, that we need to add one class to Chapman and possibly two. What is the impact that's gonna have? What that's gonna have is art and/or music will need to be put on a cart versus having a classroom. So when we add that first grade classroom and we add possibly that preschool classroom, it would be, one of those would be on a cart, or they could share a room and kind of trade off in the morning. And then right now, they have half-day kindergarten, which is A M only, so that would free up a room in the P M that whoever's on the cart could use. Is everybody with me so far? I'm not gonna, again, I'm not gonna go through this, but for those people that want the details, the checkmarks are the details to say, hey, we would put the additional first grade room in the half-day kindergarten room. Half-day would go to music, and music would have to either share with art, or one of them would be on a cart in the A M. And in the P M, they would have a room. If we added the preschool, art and music would have to vacate their room and, you know, would be able to use a P M room for, for that part of the day. So Chapman, if we do nothing, art and/or music are gonna be on a cart for a portion of the day. Before I move on to the other examples, does that make sense? Everybody with me? Okay. Kinzner, some of the current challenges that are there, music is in the media center. Bannon Orchestra are in the atrium when you first enter the building. And what I mean by traveling is Maraski and Kinzner are both larger buildings, so they need two encore teachers for each subject to support them. So they have a full-time art, music, P E teacher, and then they have somebody that travels there for part of the day to support art, music, and P E. So what that is saying is art and music for those traveling folks are on a cart or again, using the half-day kindergarten room. If we do not make any changes, if you remember, Kinzner is gonna add a section. They have to add another class next year. What that would mean is all music would be on a cart, and the gifted class would have to go from the room that they're in, which is the old music room, and they would have to go to the media center. So that's kind of the bumping order there. The new section goes to the music room, gifted goes to the media center, music is on a cart. Maraski, some of the challenges that are there now is all music is on a cart right now. So they have a traveling teacher and the full-time music teacher are both on a cart. Traveling art is in the media center. Our gifted classroom is in the old principal's office or in the principal's office, which is a sizable space. And then we have intervention specialists that are providing special education services in the media center of Maraski. If you've ever, ever been to Maraski, there's the main section of the media center, and then there was what used to be the Maker Space, which is, has a little open door, but it's its own separate space within the media center. That's where they're at. Right now, Maraski is not slated to increase sections. So what we would change next year, if there's no changes, is based on our, our special education students that will be there next year, we're gonna look at doing some division of a larger classroom that they're sharing as a kind of communal space right now. And then that would be the main change that would be there. Music would continue to be on the cart, art and intervention specialists in the media center. At Surar, some of the current challenges is music. Now, these buildings don't have an extra music R P E teacher. They just have one full-time teacher. So our music teacher is on the cart. The gifted classroom is in two office, smaller office spaces. That's been converted to, to a, a one space. We have consolidated and shared spaces for our intervention specialists. They share a smaller room. We've had to eliminate the sensory room. At Surar, just like Chapman, we have our students with moderate to intensive needs, and students of, of all needs can tend to benefit from a sensory room, but that's especially needed for our moderate to intensive students, and that's been consolidated to more things in the classroom versus a dedicated space. And then Bannon Orchestra is in the media center. Surar right now is not slated to add any sections. So it would just be some internal movement to accommodate, you know, some of the changes that, in, in size. So based on our gifted numbers for next year, they're not going to fit in that small space. So the gifted classroom would need to go to the media center, and then we'd have to figure out, where does Bannon Orchestra go? Or how can we schedule it so gifted's not in the media center as Bannon Orchestra perform? So that would be the challenge there. Whitney Elementary School, as I said, they're reducing a section, so it's gonna free up a room for them next year. So what they're, one of their current challenges is, this was highlighted on our video, is they have one intervention specialist in the media center, two of them sharing a classroom, which becomes challenging. So we're looking to do some construction in the media center to help support a more, a, a small group learning space. And with that one classroom that won't be needed next year, whether it's a sensory room, small group supports, or just an additional classroom saved for overflow if needed, that would be the plan for Whitney. So that, those are the changes, or that, that's what would happen if we would say, hey, stay the course, no changes. That's, that's what would be the impact on each of the buildings. Any questions or clarifications on that before I move on? Okay, so option one was no changes. I wanted to share with you four additional options that we've been considering as a team. And so option two would be centralizing half-day kindergarten. And so one of the things that we've taken a look at is, we've traditionally had five sections of half-day kindergarten, one per building. So when I say a section of that, that's that half-day, that three hours per day. And so that means even though it's only in that space for a half-day, that takes up a room. So at most, I think in the last handful of years, we had two sections, we had six sections total. So maybe an A M, P M at one building, and the rest only had a half-day. So historically, we've only ranged in the, we've had five, or maybe we added a sixth section. So the idea would be, instead of having half-day kindergarten students attend their home building, we would pick two or three schools that would house all of the half-day kindergarten classes, and that would free up rooms in other school, it would free up one room in a school that no longer had to have half-day kindergarten. So again, the question that I asked our elementary principals is what benefits would you realize if you gain one room because you don't have a half-day kindergarten class in your building next year? Option three was looking at mobile units, trailers, however you want to phrase it, adding a, a two-classroom mobile unit. So this is something Steve's been doing research on to price out. And so this would be a, a mobile unit that would be placed outside of, on our district property, but, you know, outside of our building, that would house two classes. And so, you know, we've talked to our principals about what those classes would be. I'm not ready to share specifically what those would be, other than the plan would be for classes where students would not be out there all day. So they'd have to go out there for a class and then come back into the building, but that's all still being discussed. So again, this would alleviate two rooms, or, or this could possibly provide a gain of two rooms. And so, you know, I asked the principals, what would you assign in the mobile classrooms? And how would that benefit you if you had spaces for two additional classrooms? Option four was converting, this was an old elementary school, right? This was Zeller's. So the option four would be converting our administrative offices to a kindergarten center. So that would be saying, let's take all of our kindergarten classes, all of our full day and all of our half-day kindergarten classes out of our buildings. Let's bring them here as a kindergarten center, and then we, as an administrative office staff, would have to go lease- have to go lease space somewhere in the city to have our administrative offices. So this ranges from three rooms that would be freed up to five in some cases in some of the buildings. So we asked them, you know, what they thought about that. And then finally, the option that we took a look at was redefining elementary boundaries. So we went from eight elementary schools, now we're down to five. We never really took a holistic look at our elementary boundaries. We just took and said, okay, when, when Zeller's closed, we're gonna take some of the neighborhoods here, and we're gonna give them to Chapman, and some to Maraski, and some to Whitney. It was not a holistic, let's take a look at the whole city of Strongsville and see where the boundaries are. So this was not so much of a, of a room issue, but can we realize some alleviation of some of the pressure of overcrowding based on distributing students in a new way across our buildings? Any questions on the options that we took a look at? So what I want to share with you is, when we took a look at those options, and the highlights are just that, options that I think we should consider moving forward with, options that maybe some, may have some challenges, and then options that we shouldn't consider. So I, I think centralizing half-day kindergarten and adding mobile units to some of our buildings is something that we need to consider as a bridge due to some of our enrollment challenges and our space challenges that we're having. In terms of converting this building to a kindergarten center, it's still an option, but I would consider this very cautiously. We've done a lot of analysis of it to this point, and there's a lot of challenges associated with it. So, for example, this building has limited capacity. If you go back to that metric, it's about 265 to 270 students that could fit here, which again, would make it a tight facility as a kindergarten center. There is a significant cost that would be a part of making the facility upgrades, and obviously staffing this is almost a sixth, would be a sixth elementary school, just for all kindergartners. There would be significant transportation challenges that would be there, as we're picking up kids from the entire city and adding another run that would do the entire city. And I'm pretty confident, not many people would be excited about five-year-olds riding with middle school students or high school students at that time. And we have done a look at, is there available space for us to go in the city? And that would be extremely challenging. There's really not a whole lot of desirable space for us. And then there would be a cost to lease that space that's there. So obviously, open to the discussion, but that's, and outside of that, there were, this, this option, we did not have any of our principals to say, hey, I think this would be a great option. They saw more challenges with this option than they saw positives. And option five is one that we've eliminated, simply because all of our buildings are crowded, and no matter how you redraw the boundaries, we're still gonna be crowded. So it's not like, hey, we've got one building or two buildings that really can use some more students. Yes, Whitney has one classroom, but that's just this year. So I don't see that as an So kind of narrowing this down on a per-building basis, we always have that option of no changes, right? We can, we can do nothing, and we know the consequences of doing nothing, and what that means for the buildings. But I went through building by building and talked with the principals to kind of map out, what are options that would make sense for that building? So besides option one, which is no changes, Chapman, the options that could help support them is a mobile unit and/or remove half-day kindergarten from their building. One or both of those would help out. Kinzner would be the same, remove half-day kindergarten. And they have a stage, that's a sizable stage, and they would, they've recommended, if possible, to convert the stage and to wall up the stage, and that could be used as a music classroom. The reason you don't see a mobile unit at Kinzner is there's really not a good space at Kinzner that would work for a mobile unit based on how it's situated there, that would not, it would necessitate kids walking a greater distance than we think is beneficial. Surar and Maraski would be the same, hey, a mobile unit and/or remove half-day kindergarten from their building. And Whitney, right now, nothing needs to happen at Whitney for next school year. So taking that as the, as the final step of what I'm recommending, that we, we take a look at for the upcoming school year, would be at Chapman Elementary School. So what I've done is, taken those options above, selected one for your consideration, and shared in the bottom, what benefits does that provide for us? So I'm suggesting that at Chapman, we purchase a mobile unit for Chapman, and that we centralize half-day kindergarten if possible. And so what that means is, if we need that additional section, if we go beyond four sections of half-day kindergarten, and we would need a fifth, Chapman would be the building that would take it. If we only need four sections of half-day kindergarten, Chapman would not have a half-day kindergarten. What we get by that is, the new class, the new first grade, the new preschool could have their own space, and then art and music could also have their own space, and nobody would be on a cart. For Kinzner Elementary School, I'm recommending that half-day kindergarten be centralized, so we would remove half-day kindergarten from Kinzner and convert the stage to a music room. For Maraski, Maraski would house half-day kindergarten at Maraski, and then a mobile unit would alleviate their space. So it would provide a classroom for music, it would provide a classroom for gifted, it would put the intervention specialists in the principal's office instead of in the media center, and then the media center would be freed up to be a media center again. Surar, I'm recommending that we provide a mobile unit for Surar, and that we remove half-day kindergarten from the building. That would take music away from being on a cart, it would get gifted into an appropriate classroom, and also frees up the media center a little bit more than we do. Whitney, as I said, no changes are needed. And so if we centralize half-day kindergarten, Whitney would take on one of those sections. So Whitney would have two sections, Maraski would have two sections, Chapman would be the overflow building if needed. So that is what I wanted to present to the board, just to kind of give you a ballpark. The, the mobile classrooms, to lease them for four years, each one, there's some upfront costs, so it's not total for the year, but you're looking at, Steve, I believe I'm accurate, but probably about $126,000 a year per unit, and then about $30,000 of upfront costs of delivery and getting it on property. So year one would be about $155,000 per unit, year two, three, and four would be $126,000 per year, and there would be, no, that's not accurate, I'm sorry, let me correct myself. That's the price for all four years. So $155,000 would be the price per one for all four years. Yes, yes, thank you. I forgot. It would be $155,000 times four, and that's all we would pay for that four-year lease, if we wanted to do four years. There would be some additional costs just for construction, right? We'd have to do sidewalks and canopies and electrical work to get out there. But, but yeah, you're looking at $155,000 times four, plus we ballparked maybe $20,000, $25,000 in additional construction to do sidewalks and electrical work and things of that nature. Per the state of Ohio, the mobile classrooms do not come with bathrooms, they're not permitted to, so, so there's no water sanitation hookup. That's why the building principals are ensuring that classes that are out there are out there for a shorter period of time. That way, we don't have to worry about bathroom usage except for emergencies.
Students would be out there for a shorter period of time.
Would it be like a fourth or fifth grade that's gonna go out there for one subject?
No, it would be, you know, options would be, a music class would be in the mobile unit because kids are going out there for 45 minutes at a time. And so those are the options that you would look at. So a class would not be out there for the full day, but they'd go out there, and students would only spend the 45 minutes out there. So that's one option that we've discussed.
So if you did that, who would you slide in next to the music class in the mobile unit?
That's what I was gonna ask, were there two classes in the mobile unit?
Yeah, so there's, there's two classes in the mobile unit.
Who's gonna hear the music all day long?
Yeah, and so those are things that we have to consider, right? As, as, what is the other class that's gonna be there? I don't know the soundproof quality of the mobile unit, so I'm not sure of that yet. But those are things that, once we figure those out, we could, we could figure out. But the idea right now would be, not having students that would need to be out there, where that would be their classroom for the entire day.
And I'm sorry, you said four mobile units? Three, right?
Three, yes, yeah, three.
So $155,000 per year for three units?
I apologize for miscommunicating or muddying it. So it would be $155,000 times three, which is $465,000, for those three units for all four years.
Plus some...
Plus around, so you're looking at half a million dollars. So you're looking at, to get three trailers for all four, for four years, would be $500,000.
Have we factored in the fact that we are still growing? Like, this addresses our need for today or yesterday, but does this address our need for 2026?
Well, and that's something, you know what, the board needs to give some direction on or thoughts. You know, one of the things that we would have to take a look at, and so one of the ideas is, we don't know what the enrollment is gonna be like every year. What we're basing things on projections, we don't know if those projections are gonna be heavy in one area and light in another area. So this is something that we can look at on a yearly basis. And, you know, if we're talking about mobile classrooms, that's something we would have to consider based on space of, if we need to expand that to another one, how could we do that? Steve and I got to, I explored the SAO conversion, he explored the mobile units. So we're at a point right now where we can't continue to focus on both of those. And so if we, if there's some willingness of the board to say, hey, go forward and flush out your recommendations here, and come back to us with more specifics, you know, conceptually right now, you're on the same page as I am, then we can do that, and we can come back with more specifics in terms of, is it possible to add a second mobile classroom a year later if needed, and what would be the challenges if we do that, or would it be better to do that now?
To help, to help me make a decision, I'd wanna see the spreadsheet. I'm comfortable ruling out converting SAO. What I wanna do, what I would wanna do is flesh out the mobile units, and I'd wanna see the, the actual costs of the mobile units on a spreadsheet so I can think about it. And then I'd, I'd wanna see some more specificity of what classes are we considering putting in the mobile units, so I can think about it.
Sure.
I have a couple more questions. To Bonnie's point from earlier, we already have some inequity in the kindergarten. Does this not just further that, by now telling those half-day parents, now we're gonna bus your kid all the way over to Whitney? So that's my concern with that. Like, I feel like we're just making the problem bigger. And my son did do that for kindergarten, we bussed him from Surar to Whitney. Educationally, it was fine, bussing was a nightmare. So that's my second question. I know there were some concerns about, you know, if we turn this into a kindergarten center or whatnot.
Sure.
Bussing, do we not then have the same? I know it would be a smaller amount, but do we not have the same bussing concerns there as well?
At this point, Curtis and I have spoken, he, he, the selection of the buildings are based on his recommendation of what he felt was most feasible to be able to do that. And so that's why Maraski, and, well, Whitney was selected because it had the open room and open space, right? And, you know, he was not concerned about taking the northern part of our kids to Whitney, and felt like for our, for our kids, you know, in the southern part, having Maraski in both Whitney would be doable.
Okay.
But the challenge right now is, we don't know where those kids live. You know, because half-day kindergarten is just starting to register, or will start registering soon, right? So based on current kind of just placements of where kids are, but we'll know that for sure when, when kids just start register.
I always have questions. I guess, you know, to what Richard said, if, if he's comfortable ruling out the SAO, I'm comfortable saying, no changes is not an option for me, for a whole bunch of reasons. Some of them include, I'm not sure all of our core curriculum classes are in classrooms right now. You know, if the gifted classrooms are indeed in a principal's office, converted offices, which were previously, before they were offices, were closets, and the, you know, the media center, that's not a classroom. So I think we have to do something. We're also still growing, I think we have to do something about that. But, so I guess that leaves us with mobile units. But I do have concerns about, who are you gonna put with the music? Because that makes sense to me, right? Most of the music's on a cart right now, so they'll be thrilled to have a classroom, something, some space, but who do you stick next to them? So I'd be really curious to hear your take on who's gonna like the maracas.
Yeah, the principals have, I, I just don't feel comfortable at this point, they were just ideas, right?
I was saying...
Yeah, principals have kind of shared, if they had that, what it would be. But again, you know, like, like Steve and I talked about, is we've gotta get more into the details of what are these units like, what are the spaces there, what is the sound quality, and then we can kind of determine what would be the best environment, or who would be best to, to be in there.
On, some of these on your last, that page there.
Yeah.
The ones that I know best, or Surar, for example, it says it's bringing up the media center, but we'd still have band and orchestra in the media center, correct?
Correct, yes.
So that, it frees it up from core classrooms, but it does not free it up, yes?
It would, it would free it up, if we did that, if we did no changes, gifted would have to go into the media center. So that's the, that's the, if we were able to do the mobile unit and centralize half-day kindergarten, it would allow, it would free up the media center from what would be gifted being in there. But yes, band and orchestra would still be in there.
So Kinzner, because we were there and saw the, them performing in the lobby, are they still in the lobby?
Even with these changes? I believe so, yes.
So I'm not even sure this, I mean...
Well, the, I guess I would say that. I'd have to check back with Steve to make sure. I believe he said possibly they could make it work where the band and orchestra could go to the stage and, and be flexible with the, the music class.
Oh, with the music classroom.
If we're able to put a wall on the stage.
So, but you might work that out.
Yeah.
So I, I guess I need a lot more details to really, does this even solve half of our problems? I don't know.
If you have other solutions that you're thinking of, let's share them now.
Well, I don't. I mean, mine is already on there.
Yeah.
Are we all in agreement, though, that we don't wanna turn this into a kindergarten center, the SAO building? I mean, I, I don't see putting the amount of money into it that we would have to, when we know that the walls are literally falling down on it. But that's just my opinion, I don't...
It is safe for the adults to be in here.
It is.
Unless it was a rainstorm, but you know...
Then it's just wet for the adults to be in here. So I, I mean, we need to go through the work. I think it, I think it's reasonable to narrow in on our options. I, I do wanna get deeper in the details, not that I'm not saying we, we don't have to do something. I wanna see the details to whether we have to do something for next year, or whether we have to plan for the year after.
So just so I'm clear, I have a lot of the details that you want. We have the quotes from the, the mobile classroom vendor that we found. I could share with you the, the details of what we're thinking in those classrooms. What other detail, just so I can provide those to you, what other details?
Those are the details.
Okay, those are...
I just wanna measure, you know, what are, what are we putting into those mobile classrooms?
Gotcha.
And then making a judgment whether we need to make that move for the next school year, or whether we can say, all of this isn't going to go anywhere, and we'll determine when to pull that trigger.
Okay.
Can we make sure we have either photos or access to photos of what, I don't really, I've never been in a mobile unit, so what does that look like?
Yeah, we'll see if the company, we don't have, I don't have anything yet, but I'm sure the company could provide that.
Field trip.
I would love a field trip.
Any other questions on this part? Any other questions on this part? All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve, who has a discussion item for you tonight.
Good evening, everyone. So the the good news is I'm not here asking for any kind of half-million-dollar projects. So that's good. But we do have to have a discussion concerning our bussing and our use of our resources for bussing. So it is a bit appropriate after the conversation that you just had to come up here and talk about the resources and how we're deploying our resources in the transportation department. So to to give framework to the discussion, we have a shortage of drivers. This is not just for Strongsville. This is a nationwide shortage. If you've read the news, school districts are having to do some pretty drastic things. In fact, I saw a story out of Cincinnati that some schools are considering two different drastically different start times to their day and flipping the students because they can't get all the students there with with one trip. So what we've done in transportation, and by we, I'm talking about myself, Curtis and Kathy, we started looking at phases of trying to find where we could better deploy our resources. So what I'm going to talk to you about tonight is the first phase, which is doing a sitting back and doing an audit of our parochial and non-public schools that we transport to. So what needs to be understood is, you know, we've advertised, we've recruited, we've incentivized, but there is not a treasure trove of drivers out there at this point in time. So we have to start looking at what we're doing internally and what resources that we're using. So just to, again, give some framework, when we get students attending other schools, there's route timings that are done by the state at the request of the parents if those route timings are over a half an hour. And just so everyone understands, it's not from the the parent's house to the school. It's from the school door of the school that they would attend if they were here in Strongsville. So any of the elementaries, middle school, high school, from that school door to the front door of the school that they're attending. And Google Maps is a wonderful resource, but not for this instance. You know, a bus travels at a much different rate of travel than a car or a van, so that the route timings are done officially. If it's over half an hour, the school district has no responsibility to provide any kind of transportation resources or any kind of financial reimbursement to the parents. So everything we're going to talk about today and all the schools we're going to talk about today fall under that half-hour mark. If they do fall under the half-hour mark, the board and the district have a decision to make. If they declare that it's impractical to send a bus to that location, we can do what's called payment in lieu of. Payment in lieu of is set by the state. It it goes up every year. It's it's based on the formula that the state has, and if if I could tell you the formula, I don't know how to do the formula. I just do it to do what they they come up with. Basically, what they say is this is what it costs for a student to be transported in the state of Ohio with all their various data points, and then they come up with a number. This year, that number is five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. I'm sorry, five hundred and thirty-eight, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents, and that was fiscal year twenty-two. So that's what will be paid out this year for students that are going to a school that's within a half hour, but we do not provide a bus to. That again, that number's going to change, and that number is the the it's the minimum that we can pay the parents in every school district in the state of Ohio. I bar maybe a few exceptions here and there. They do the minimum payment, which is the five hundred and thirty-eight. The maximum is eleven hundred and nine per student. So, sorry, my screen timed out. So this is also if they go to school every day. Every day that the student, that the child doesn't attend school is that that payment is then reconfigured, because if they don't, if they weren't getting transported that day to the school from their parent, then we don't have to pay for that either. So it's always prorated. But the maximum that we've been giving out, we will give out, is the five thirty-eight fifty-five. In May, late April, early May, we'll get the new amount that gets paid out. And like I said, every year, that changes. Any questions so far? Because that's the framework for what we need to discuss today.
Historically, historically, how much has it changed?
Well, the greatest jump was from last year to this year. It jumped about two hundred dollars. Other than that, it's maybe jumped, I'd estimate behind one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty-five.
And there was there was a big change to that in the last budget.
It was pretty consistent before, and the last budget, they doubled the formula.
Okay.
So I'm going to give you a bunch of data, and then what I'm here for is to show you the data of what we found in the audit and then seek some guidance from the board because I it is the business, you know, it says business services on the door, so I'm always looking at it from a business standpoint. But there is some other consideration, and I want to be fair for those other considerations as well. So looking at this holistically. So what I've what I've shared with you is a chart of the schools that we transport to, again, underneath that half-hour. And what what we've never done is set any kind of matrix in place. We've always just said, I can't, well, I shouldn't say always, students speaking generalities. Traditionally, what we have said, and since I've taken this position, is we've waited until it was a very, very low number of students going, and and then we would come to the board and say, we'd like you to declare this impractical. What I want to put in place is a systematic way that every year we do an audit, every year I present, and every year we start looking at trends to see where are we going. And then we can communicate that with our partners that we that we provide transportation services to. The worst thing for for my department to do is all of a sudden it looks like a surprise. There should be no surprises. If you're a school that the trend has been falling, there should be kind of some kind of matrix to say, if this keeps up, we are not going to be transporting to your your school any longer. Or, you know, if it increases, then then we will keep transporting. But I we just don't want it to be a surprise from the transportation office or transportation department. So what you have in front of you are Albert Einstein, Royal Redeemer, St. Albert the Great, and then Incarnate Word, St. Mary's, and St. Barstolmew, Padua High School, and St. Ambrose is who we were transporting to. So the first the first two lines here in this chart is just a data point of how much does it cost for a student at Strongsville City Schools to ride the bus? And this is comes from something called the T2 report, where we report everything, the buses, the mileage of the buses, we report our drivers, we report how many students we take to and from the schools, both anyone that has any kind of special accommodations needed and also the the traditional student. All of that is factored in. And the number that that I'm working with is the number from the T2 report to transport traditional students to and from the school on a yearly basis, and that number is nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Again, that's how I arrive at that, is from the state report. The average ridership of our buses, now some are above forty, some are below forty, but the average number of students that we have on a bus per run to and from a school is forty students. So what I did is I took that nine sixty-eight times it by forty, so our runs cost us on an annual basis thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. So that's just a point of reference. Underneath, through the audit, we found how many riders are going in the morning, how many riders are going in the afternoon, and then I just took the average, add those up and divide by two. Underneath that, then, what I took is that average, and I divided that number into the thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty. So for example, Royal Redeemer, there's an average of twenty-four students riding, so thirty-eight thousand seven twenty divided by twenty-four, and you get sixteen hundred and fourteen. Ignore the colors for 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 right now, but that's that's the number I'm coming up with, and that and that goes for all of the schools, to the point you can see St. Ambrose, where there's no AM route, it's only a PM route, and it's five students that are riding that route. So the average cost for one student on that bus is seven thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars. So quick math is a lot more than what it costs for us to transport a student to and from our own building. The next line is the payment in lieu of cost. So payment in lieu of, as I said, is five hundred and thirty-eight dollars fifty-five cents. You cannot take that number and just times it by, for example, Albert Einstein is thirty-four, because if we say we're no longer transporting, we have to then provide payment in lieu of to every student that lives in Strongsville that would attend our schools if they weren't attending that school that they're choosing to attend. So even though thirty-four times five thirty-eight fifty-five is not fifty-eight thousand dollars, I did not make a mistake in the math, right now, St. Albert, I'm sorry, Albert Einstein has a hundred and two students that that go to that school that would go to Strongsville City Schools if Albert Einstein was not in existence. So we have to do a payment in lieu of to every single one of those parents. Or I'll put it this way, every single one of those parents has the option to contact us, fill out the forms, and get the payment in lieu of. So that would be the ceiling of what we would pay. Does that make sense? And then the last line I have there is basically what's the difference? So you can see with Albert Einstein, it actually, if we decided we weren't going to send a bus any longer because of the number of students that attend, we would actually be paying nineteen thousand nine hundred, almost twenty thousand dollars more to do a payment in lieu of option versus just sending a couple buses out there. All right?
Steve, have the rules changed? The parents need to apply for the payment in lieu of.
Correct.
And we're not we're not obligated to find them and tell them.
No. What we're obligated to do is make sure that the schools know who is payment in lieu of. The school is then responsible to contact the parents and say, basically, this is what you need to do. Now, what we have done, because we we are good neighbors and and we want to be fair to everyone, is if we do have students that attend that, we do get the roster every year. And if we don't, if if we're not providing transportation, we do send out a little bit of, we send out a reminder that payment in lieu of is an option for you. We make sure that goes to both the school and the parents of the residents of Strongsville.
How long have we been doing that?
That has been since I've been here.
Okay.
Yeah. So you can see, now, here's where the here's where I'm looking at some guidance. Well.
Steve, before you go.
Do you know what, like, what's the average, percent of parents that actually apply for this?
It honestly varies by school. I would say the averages, and this is just a complete guess, probably between sixty to seventy percent.
Okay.
But it does vary per by school. Some schools are a hundred percent. Every every student there, the parents have a network, and they all fill out the forms and send them in, and and that's that's fine. I mean, they're 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 do they're do what they deserve, so.
Thank you.
So the if you if you scroll down a little bit, I do have some color coding here on the first three options. I I'm what I'm attempting to do is is come up with some kind of matrix, like I said. So what I have there is if we're transporting, the average number of students transported is twenty-one and over, and I remember that's that's half. All right, this is where the the business manager side of me starts to need a little bit of guidance, because to me, anything less than forty, let's let's reevaluate this, right? But I want to be fair, because I want to come up with, again, with some kind of not the schools that we're working with could have some kind of knowledge base of where our decision-making is coming from. So what I have here, and these are completely just, this isn't set in stone at all, obviously, is anything, anyone transporting an average of twenty-one and over per day, we would say that that's good. That's green, we would transport. Students that, if it's an eleven to twenty average, they would be in that period where we we're going to send them a letter saying, look, your ridership is dipping. What we need to start looking at, you know, is there any way to beef up the ridership to these schools? Or, you know, are you are you advertising that there is a bus going to and from your school? Anything under ten, ten and under, I have as a red, that we really need to seriously consider, because at the very least, we're paying four times as much for that student or that those groups of students individually. Again, cost per student, I just came I came up with, if it if they're under two thousand dollars, and that's, again, taking how much the average ridership is, if it's under two thousand dollars, it's green, two thousand or three thousand dollars, I mean, you start looking at some trends, and then if it goes over three thousand dollars per student, it goes to that red line. And then the payment in lieu of cost for the roster. This one's hard, because that's such a moving target. But what I came up with is over average cost for forty riders is fine. So in the case of like Albert Einstein, hundred and two students, it would actually cost us more money in payment in lieu of payments, we're going to keep bussing. In the in the yellow is anything from seventy-five percent to ninety-nine percent. Now, seventy-five percent, give or take, of the average bus now would be around twenty-nine thousand dollars. So if we're going to start paying out twenty-nine thousand dollars and less or and more, up to thirty-eight thousand, we would say we need to look at the roster again. Anything under that two thou, anything under seventy-five percent is is a red line, because we're starting to to encroach upon it's not worth the investment. Does that does that make sense? The other two factors on there that that I just want to briefly touch on, because it I understand it could be all traditionally, it's been all about how many students are riding, and then everything sprang from there. However, there's there are some other considerations, to be fair, the distance and the travel time. That that's why you're not seeing St. Joseph's and John's on here, because I can't imagine a scenario it's not worth going down literally two properties from the middle school. And we integrate those into the middle school. So putting that data point on here, it just, I I think it would just muddy it all up, to be honest with you. And there's so many riders from St. Joseph's and John's and the roster alone, what it would never be practical to pay the payment in lieu of versus send a bus. There's over two hundred students on their roster that are Strongsville students. So that data point wasn't necessary here for any kind of purpose that for this decision-making process. The other one is can the routes be combined? So for example, if you look, I did have details of the route there in that white section that if it's combined with middle school runs, Royal Redeemer and St. Albert's are so close that those routes are actually, once those kids are picked up and put onto a bus, they're combined and run through. I think that that is something that needs to be taken into consideration. Now, how much of a consideration? Again, that's why I'm I'm coming to the board. I'm not making a recommendation tonight other than to say, here's the start of a matrix I think we can start to look at on an annual basis. And then I did put on there, because we do live in a world, like I said, to circle back around to my first point, we have a driver shortage. If we were to start, and 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 I have, of course, three schools in red here that I would very much consider, do we keep transporting to these schools at this at this time? If we were to to stop transporting and pay the payment in lieu of, we would free up two morning routes and five evening routes. What that really comes down to, and I, because I've been dealing with transportation long enough, that what that really comes down to is two drivers. When you're able to free up a morning and an afternoon, now you freed up one whole bus, you freed up a whole driver. Freeing up just something in the afternoon may not necessarily help your cause, because you don't have the flip side of getting the kids to school. But in this instance, if we were to say that these three schools are no longer being transported to, it would free up two whole drivers, which, in reference back to the conversation you had before, if we start reconfiguring the way kids are transported into our own buildings, we need to start looking at where can we get those drivers from, even if it's from our own ranks. So I I guess at that point, is there any question, any questions on the on the on the spreadsheet, on the matrix that I have started, if there's anything you want to add or?
The St. Ambrose numbers, I know you said we would never touch SJJ because they're so close to here. I know, I think we do have some SJJ students that ride to St. Ambrose and they get a Brunswick bus. Does that take that into consideration?
No.
Okay.
I did not. I can.
I don't know. I mean, it could be two, it could be.
It would not be very high, where else I would have been, that it would have made it on with the audit. But I can definitely look at that and see if there's any. I know there's nobody in the morning, because we had nobody. I know there's nobody in the morning, because we had nobody, last year, we had one student that was going in the morning. So, there's not even a bus offered this year, because that student's parents decided that they didn't want her to ride the bus in the morning.
I have a question about the color coding. So, I'm looking at the yellow, for example, and it says 11 to 20 would make it yellow, and $2,000 to $3,000 range, right?
Yeah.
But then, I look at Incarnate Word, and it is in the right range for students. It's an 11 to 20, it's 12, but it's already over $3,000. Is that because it's just not precise, like it's going to hit one category, not the other? Or do we need more adjustments?
No, I just didn't put the right color on there.
Oh, it just needs to change.
Yeah.
But, but, I guess what I'm saying is that it meets the yellow for one, but not the other. So, how would we then, like, is the goal to get them all the same color? Should we adjust our metric? Or?
That's what I'm asking. Is it, if the three metrics that you have there are the only metrics,
Okay.
then is it enough to say, two of the three have to be red before we declare you impractical? If two of the three are yellow, you're still in the, be careful, you may move into the red zone? That's, that's, again, what I'm coming to you for, because that's where the business side of me says, okay, you're, this is not cost-effective what we're doing. But there's the other side of, we are providing a service to students in the community. And so, where do we start to, we don't want to be a charity, but we, because we do have responsibilities to everyone. But where do we start drawing the line? And again, it's always been this blurred line that when I would have to talk to parents, they would say, well, how many students? Or, if I was talking to other administrations, how many students have to be riding before you guys are going to, are going to cut us off? It's a fair question, and I have not been able to give a straight answer to that. That's, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Larry.
So, I wanted to, A, start by, I think it's, you should be complimented for trying to come up with some kind of way to do that. I think, I think parents in Strongsville, we should owe them that. That when they ask, we can say, well, here's the, here's what it looks like, here's how we evaluate it. That's better than, you know, we kind of see which way with the flavor of the wind blows every year. So, I think that's a great direction to be going in. Do we, as far as your rubric is concerned, do we have any Strongsville? Well, let me ask an earlier question. Is there any other buddy missing besides SJJ? Are they the only ones? So, can we just throw them in there for?
Yeah.
To just have the data there?
Yeah.
And then, the follow-up questions, the things I'm thinking about is whether, do we have any buses taking our own kids that average these numbers?
No. On the lower end, now, I.
What I want to, what I want to make sure is, is we're not, I just want to make, I just want to know, understand the numbers, because maybe that's the other column to add, is our in-house bussing. But on the face of it, you know, I can understand a parent of a parochial student saying, I pay all of my property taxes. I don't send my child to the public school, you know? I don't want to get into an agenda argument, but, you know, take care of the bus, right? Right, wrong, or indifferent, it's not, it's not totally out of the, out of the realm of a reasonable ask. I wouldn't want to say we're setting these metrics up and then find out that we have similar metrics for our own. You know, if we have a bus that consistently, for whatever reason, because it's going down a cul-de-sac or whatever, picks up 11 kids, I just want to make sure we understand that as far as whatever the rubric is, to make sure that there's some reasonableness across the board. So, that'd be something I think we can grab the data on, and it shouldn't be a heavy lift to figure out. My instinct is, is, you know, 20 kids is probably our least number, but I'm not Curtis. Curtis will have the answer for me. And then, the only other question I have is, is there a?
Before you move on to that question?
Yeah.
That is also the second level of what we're doing right now. To see if there's any buses and routes that we can start to combine, so that we can fill these buses up more.
Same idea.
Yep.
And then, the only other one I want to, I want to try to drill down on is, is there another way to come up with a cost metric? Not to say the average of the T2 report, but what's, what's our actual cost? And is there other ways to say? I think it's reasonable that nobody, nobody is going to advocate for sending a bus that carries 40 kids and a driver and all the diesel fuel, et cetera, to transport six kids. So, is there anything else we should consider as far as minivans or other kinds of transportation?
If that's what your direction is, I can investigate that. Because that's something I have looked at.
I mean, I know suburban, I know we use suburban transportation for some of our special ed transportation. I don't know if it's still available or not.
Now, and when you start getting into that realm, that $900 number jumps to in the $10,000 number. Because that's, that's a different, I did not include that in here. Because I thought for baseline conversation, for a Thursday night, we didn't need to start throwing that in the mix, too. But that's definitely something we can, we can look at. The legalities of transporting also change quite drastically when you start looking into different segments of a population.
It's good enough for me that we've considered it. I don't need to, you know, if there's other ways to skin the cat, let's talk about it. If they're, if they're not for reasons like compliance and, you know, the state has lots of safety rules for bus drivers and transporting kids, and we should. I don't do this every day, or full-time, you do, or at least Curtis does.
Any other questions for Steve? So, in terms of just, besides the information that Steve shared, another part that, you know, Steve and I want you to think about is, you know, what is the timeline for communicating with these buildings, right? We've taken offline some parochial schools in the past, because for two years in a row, they haven't had ridership. So, so that's the part of, you know, for the people in yellow, the consideration is, do we send them a letter to say, hey, Kana, you're on the watch list? How many years do you need to be on the red list? And we send the watch list letter, and then we say, hey, if it doesn't improve by this point, then we are going to no longer transport and move to payment in lieu of. And just to refresh us beside, you know, Steve did a great job of going through all the metrics that he put together. It's kind of like the elementary space. We have finite opportunities and options to help improve a challenging situation. We only have so many drivers. Steve has studied this this year and believes, here's the number of drivers I think we really realistically can have next year. Here's how many drivers are out for sick or personal leave or whatever on a daily basis. So, I need to build staffing to plan for not just, hey, if everybody shows up, we're good. But let's plan for the fact that X amount of drivers are absent on a daily basis, like any portion of our staff. And so, we can make that with the three, you know, floaters that we have, our substitute pool. So, what Steve is going to advocate for is, and be factual of, if we don't take some of these offline, here are the challenge, the practical challenges that we're going to face on a day-to-day basis, which are double runs, lengthier ride homes. You know, we've been lucky enough, you know, and the one part that we don't talk about is Curtis and Kathy, who are our supervisors, are driving on a daily basis. We need to work to ensure that they're able to do their job to supervise the department. They're doing a great job. But it's tough when you're going and driving like you're a regular driver. So, keep that in consideration as we loop back, if you would please. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Aaron Green with the curriculum report for the month, Aaron.
Good evening. Three items tonight for your consideration. Our first item is for edmentum. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that Strongsville City School District pays to purchase edmentum courseware to be utilized in our credit recovery and Strongsville Academy programs. This is a three-year contract that would begin July 21st of 2023. The total cost is $95,325. And again, that's a three-year contract, so it would be broken into three equal payments. The first payment of $31,775 would be payable for each of the next three years. And again, that's software that we use for our credit recovery program, our Strongsville Academy program at the high school, we also use it for summer school. Second item is an overnight trip for the Strongsville High School Girls Varsity and Junior Varsity Lacrosse Teams. So, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that permission be granted to the Strongsville High School Girls Varsity and Junior Varsity Lacrosse Teams to travel to Worthington, Ohio. This is April 21st through the 22nd of 2023 to participate in a lacrosse tournament. Transportation will be school bus, expenses paid by participating students, as well as the Strongsville Athletic Boosters. And the third and final item tonight is another overnight trip. This one for the Strongsville High School Varsity, Junior Varsity, and Freshman Cheerleaders. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, permission be granted to the Strongsville High School Varsity, Junior Varsity, and Freshmen Cheerleaders to travel to Alliance, Ohio for overnight, July 11th through the 13th, 2023. They will be attending University of Mount Union Cheer Camp. Transportation via school bus, expenses paid by participating students.
Any questions for Aaron? Thank you, Aaron. Next, we have Director of Student Services, Andy Trujillo, with the report, Student Service Report for the Month, Andy.
Good evening, members of the board. I have four items for your consideration. Number one and two are identical. I plan to read them once, unless you would like me to read them twice, I will. They are for Insight Behavioral Consulting. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with Insight Behavioral Consulting, operating an educational institution known as Insight Academy for placement of a student who requires special education-related services for the 2022-2023 school year in the amount of $1,983.33 prorated for the third quarter with a March 20th, 2023 start date, and in the amount of $17,850 for the fourth quarter, for a total of $19,833.33 during the school year. And an additional $5,000 if the student were to attend ESY extended school year. So, item number three is extended school year for our students with disabilities this summer. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the extended school year program for school age and preschool students with disabilities at Strongsville Middle School for the sessions listed below, which are ESY services, June 20th, 2023 through July 20th, 2023. And number four, tuition-free admission for foreign exchange student. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent to the tuition-free admission for the 2023-2024 school year be granted to the following foreign exchange student listed below.
Any questions for Andy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Next up, we have our Assistant Superintendent Jenny Pelco with the Human Resource Report.
Remember who I am?
Well, he threw me off there, walking up.
Oh, you were getting up, oh, sorry.
Yeah, he was getting up.
Want to go first, Dave?
Yeah.
I have the following items for your consideration this evening under Human Resources. We have the resignation of a certificated district substitute. Resignations for non-certificated employees. Under three, we have a retirement for certificated staff. Under four, retirements for non-certificated staff. Five, we have the appointments of certificated staff. Six, appointment for non-certificated staff. Under seven, home instruction tutor. Under eight, appointments for certificated substitutes. Under nine, appointments for non-certificated substitutes. Ten, appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Eleven, an appointment for certificated athletic supplemental contract. I do want to announce that Erica Boyes has accepted the position upon your approval this evening to be the head volleyball coach. She's been involved with the program for many years and is a teacher within our district. Under 12, we have an appointment of a certificated supplemental contract paid upon completion. Thirteen, changes in hours for non-certificated staff. Fourteen, changes in status for non-certificated staff. Fifteen, continuing contracts for non-certificated staff. Sixteen, medical leaves for certificated staff. Seventeen, medical leaves for non-certificated staff. Under eighteen, we have unpaid medical leaves for certificated staff. Nineteen, unpaid medical leaves for non-certificated staff. Twenty, volunteer chaperones. And twenty-one, we have the substitute, proposed substitute rates for non-certificated staff. And be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that effective April 1st, 2023, the non-certificated substitute rate schedule be amended to the filing percentage of the non-certificated salary schedule, which is step A, base hourly pay as follows. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Jenny? Dave, you ready? All right.
Now, you're up.
Next up, we got Dave with the Technology Report.
I guess I don't come up here enough to know what my spot is. So, I have four items for your considerations tonight. The first one is an amendment to 2023-2024 school year technology upgrades by increasing the district bandwidth from 1G to 2G. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following amendments to the agenda dated March 21st, 2019, E-technology. That the amendment to the agenda for March 21st, 2019, technology be the Northern Buckeye Education Council Northwest Ohio Computer Association Member Service Agreement. That the member service agreements between the Northwest Computer Association and Strongsville City Schools be approved to provide the unbundled internet access. This service offer includes basic conduit internet access and increases the bandwidth in Ethernet to 2G. This will be for year 505 of this contract from July 1st of 2019 to June 30th, 2024. The annual cost payable to the Northern Buckeye, let's see, the N-E-B, or N-B-E-C to be $66,844, which is E-rate eligible. And then, the content filtering is to remain the same at $10,800, which is non-E-rate eligible. Any questions? Item number two is our annual Meta Solutions Master Service Agreement for Schedules 1 and Schedule 2 for 2023 and 2024 school year. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves Schedule 1 and Schedule 2 of the agreement between Meta Solutions and the Strongsville City Schools. Schedule 1 will provide information technology service for 22, or 2023 to 2024 at an annual cost of $94,888.75. There is a 2% discount for early payment, reducing the annual cost to $92,990.97. Schedule 2 will provide Info Ohio Library Services for 2023 to 2024 at an annual cost of $16,428.50. Item three is for technology upgrades for the 2023-2024 school year. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the purchase of Chromebooks, computers, and Google Chrome management licenses that shall not exceed $450,000. These are to be provided Chromebooks to the 2023-2024 grades 6 and 9, and replacement Chromebooks to the elementary schools as needed. Also, to provide total replacement Chromebooks via the self-insurance fund for devices that are no longer operational. And my last item today is 2023-2024 school year technology upgrades of the PC Refresh Project Phase 1. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves Phase 1 of the PC Refresh Project to replace 150 outdated teacher PCs with updated Windows 11-ready teacher PCs and compatible monitors. The cost of Phase 1 should not exceed $150,000.
Questions for Dave?
Dave, it may be a George question, but the earlier questions I had about interest rates? The 2% prepayment, is that a, how, how far are we prepaying it? And do we need to consider, does it make sense not to get the discount?
It's just one, one payment that we're probably going to pay in June or July.
Normally, we do it at the flip, yeah.
Yeah, it's just an annual payment.
We should be able to say, this is, you know, whether it's this or not. Back, back when interest is zero point zero zero percent, every prepayment discount we could take was because we had money in the bank made sense, but at some point, it may not make sense. So I just wanted to ask the question out loud.
Yeah. When would it normally be due, Dave, if we prepay?
Normally, it's due, I think actually we pay it in June normally because it's for the flip of the academic year, so it has to be in by Ju- July first. That's when the contract starts.
So is it just a month different if we prepay it?
If we're saving two percent to, for thirty days, that's a no-brainer.
Right.
But if we're saving two percent and we could be paying it nine months or ten months or a year from now, that's something we need to look at, but you know how to work a calculator.
Yeah, I could look in the, the, the service agreements. I don't know when the prepayment is due by, um, but I'll look into that and see.
Thank you. And then my follow-up is on the, the teacher. How many phases are there?
Um, right now, we're projecting three. One for the elementary schools is what this one is projected for. Phase two is mostly the high school, and phase three would be the middle school. Um, and it all has to be done by, in, in my mind, the summer of two thousand twenty-five because Windows, uh, ten gets its last security update in October of two thousand twenty-five. So we have to make sure we're all ready for Windows eleven that summer so we can transition everybody at one time, and the whole district will be together then.
Are they going to be, are they equal phases?
Oh, yeah, there are about a hundred and fifty desktops and monitors per phase.
And the, the monitors, do we need to replace the monitors?
Uh, yes. A lot of the, um, desktops that we have at our elementary school, definitely, they're averaging between seven to eleven years old, and they have the old VGA monitor plugs. The new desktops we're getting are all HDMI and DisplayPort. What's nice about the newer projectors we're getting, not like this one, but the one in, um, our room twenty-two here, the Epson seven thirty-fives, they have auto-resolution. If your monitor's HDMI and then the projector is DisplayPort or HDMI, it auto, has auto-resolution. Currently, we have to manually set the resolutions because of the way that they connect with the VGA and HDMI in our classrooms.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. With that, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the Adoption of Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education in Adoption of Consent Calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda denoted as type dash action consent, which items constitute the consent calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the Board of, the Board or the superintendent requests that such items be removed from the consent calendar and then voted upon separately. Do we need anything removed? Hearing none. George, or any, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
To the second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stopcheck, second by Mr. Miko.
Ready?
Ready.
Ms. Locheck?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. George, we'll turn it back over to you.
So there's a new section for this meeting, Treasury Report Tax Complaints. As part of House Bill one twenty-six that was passed last April, but Boards of Education must now approve the, these tax complaints prior to filing them with the County Board of Revisions. It must be separated from other Board Agenda items, but can it be approved as their own group, which is why they're listed separate? The tax complaints that are being recommended are on commercial property sales, that, um, commercial property sales being sold higher to their county value. This is our opportunity to offset any decreases we receive from commercial property, uh, commercial property owners filing complaints to lower their values. Is, it's an annual filing that we do every March with the county. Both sides must file by March thirty-first. And with, um, House Bill one twenty-six that was passed last year by the legislature and signed by Governor DeWine, we must now approve these through the, um, must have Board approval prior to submitting them to the County Board of Revisions. Um, so there's, uh, for this year, we have six that, um, we're recommending to file on, and they're slated in the agenda below. And then there's the Consent Calendar to approve them in one motion, and I, I, item N.
Motion to adopt the Consent Calendar for tax complaint.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stopcheck, second by Mr. Miko. George, can you take the roll?
Hang on one second. Ms. Locheck?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
And Mr. Biss, and Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Item O on the agenda, Report on Polaris Career Center.
Yes, I'd like to share a couple of quick things here tonight. Dr. Reib and I had our February meeting this March morning. Uh, we met with Bob Timmons, the superintendent at Polaris, and chatted about Strongsville's relationship with Polaris and, uh, how our programs are really doing excellent. We've had more applications than we've ever had, and our students are attending and largely happy is what we learned here this morning. We had a chance to talk with two E M T and fire students, Linda Stricko and Allison Walsh, and they sat down with us and Dr. Reib, he grilled them, but they gave great answers.
They did.
Um, they were honest and, um, really gave us good insight into the work that the Fire and E M T program is doing at Polaris. So we want to give a shout out to them, thank you, thank them for their time and their insight, and just get a chance to get to know them. And then we also met Sarah Wren, who's in the Pre-Vet Program, which is a new program, and Polaris is in the process of building a new facility that would look like a veterinarian's office, and they will be able to access or access, maybe, um, and service pets from the community in coming years. Um, we got to see, they have models that they can do sutures on and some kind of dog head made out of plant material that must soak in a solution in order to, it, it's a big thing. But we got to see all the kids in action, and that was awesome. So thank you to Bob and Polaris and to Sarah, Linda, and Allison for welcoming, welcoming us today. Um, in, at April, we'll have our awards dinner where we'll honor students. They'll be able to come with their families and enjoy the culinary creations and be presented with the award. So we're looking forward to that in April. And there was one other thing, but that's going to do it for now. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Report on legislation?
Uh, so I just wanted to update the community on the state budget. Yesterday or the day before, uh, there was the State Legislative Conference, and it's a, a conference or a seminar that is held by the, the High School Boards Association, the Business School Boards. There's business officials, et cetera, the superintendents all have a, a common conference. The governor was in attendance and did talk about his budget, uh, and he, uh, the things that I think are good is he continued his commitment to the fair funding formula. We've had it for two years. It's being phased in over a number of years. And he stated it's, you know, as long as he's governor, he will continue to advocate to continue, uh, funding that and getting us to the point of officially being fully, uh, fair school-funded in Ohio. And then he spent a lot of time talking about his, uh, plans, uh, in the budget for the reading guarantee, which is, uh, based on the science of literacy, which we had a great update on. I feel our district is the pilot or, or the leaders in this. But he talked about, A, they don't, the state doesn't know how many school districts are actually already teaching the science of reading. So we'll need to let Erin send the governor an email to say Strongsville is. And one of the things that they're proposing is having, uh, funding grants or funding, um, ways to get the, the training to the teacher and pay, and, and for the state to pay for that. So I want to make sure George is keeping track of all the dollars we're spending on that. So when the time comes, we can send the governor a bill. Um, and then the, uh, the third thing he discussed in general was the state superintendent. And he declared that if Senate Bill One is passed and turned into law and that the state superintendent becomes a cabinet position in the governor's office, he wants to, uh, appoint someone that is a established educational professional and will continue the priorities he's already maintained. So I think that was good to hear. The budget process is gearing up, so more to come, and I'm sure more excitement will, uh, will ensue. And that completes my report.
Thank you. City Council.
City Council met on Monday, and it was a efficient meeting. There was quite a bit of discussion for the public because it was a public hearing about some rezoning as far as car washes are concerned. So if that is of concern to you, contact your city council persons and let them know your opinion. And although it's not city council per se, uh, the mayor did deliver his state-of-the-city address on Tuesday. Uh, the days are running together too quickly. Uh, he did deliver his state-of-the-city address on Tuesday. Uh, I was able to be in attendance. I know, uh, Mr. Clark, who is our, uh, education liaison, was in attendance also. And the mayor gave a very good update on where the city has been and where it's going. Uh, and highlighted, uh, the one thing I think he always highlights is the financial condition of the city. Uh, he's very proud of the hard work that everyone in the city has done to be in the financial condition Strongsville is in. It is the, uh, every, everyone who's listened to him knows, uh, we have a, the city of Strongsville has a triple-A bond rating, one of the highest for public, and we are, uh, proud of the fact in the school district that we're just one, one notch below that. But it's because of sound financial prudence. And, uh, I thought it was, I thought it was very interesting, the parallels between the city and their values and the school district and their values. So it is on, uh, the intertubes or the Internet. So if you weren't in attendance, I recommend you, uh, see it or watch it. And I was going to give a shout out to Councilman Carbone because he highlighted some of the developments for the Town-City Center project that's coming along, and that's very exciting for all our families. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, here's the Strongsville Education Foundation. I was not able to attend the meeting. Mrs. Kilbane was there. Um, but I'm sure they probably spent a lot of time talking about their upcoming, uh, major fundraiser, the Jockeys and Julips. It's on May sixth at the Strongsville Recreational Center. They will have a wine pool, sideboards, horse races, betting, a liquor raffle, and a chuckaluck. I'm not quite sure what a chuckaluck is. I don't know. I know, let's do it. Fifty-fifty raffle. Um, you can go to their website or their Facebook page and scan the Q R code to purchase your tickets. And that concludes that report. Next, Strongsville PTA Council.
Yes, um, they last met on March second. A couple of highlights from that meeting. Um, they held, uh, the Mardi Gras Dance at the middle school. They made about two thousand dollars on that dance. And then, so the public's aware that where the money goes for generally is to support scholarships. So they're hoping to give out ten scholarships this year totaling fifteen thousand dollars. So that's some excellent work, and we're, we're grateful for that. Coming up in May is the installation lunch, where, where they will install new officers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And that will be May fourth at eleven-thirty at J. Bella. And they'll also announce, um, award winners, the Helping Hands Award winners at that event. And then finally, the main presenter that day, this is my, this was my first PTA Council meeting, so it was really exciting. Apparently, they have special highlighted speakers. This one was Dave Binkley. And, uh, so you heard some, actually, some of what he shared there. He also shared here tonight. But he also talked about, um, some new things, the esports program that we now have at the high school, um, the new audio lab, which they just did a little promo video, so I don't know if we'll make that public eventually, but that was really cool to see. Um, what other things did he talk about? He talked about the Maker Space Cards. He talked about, uh, we had a handful of presenters at the O E T C State Conference, so that was fantastic. So he just gave us a little bit of everything, uh, and it was really nice to hear what's going on in the world of tech in Strongsville City Schools. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Going on to Board Committee Reports, Finance Committee.
We had a meeting February twenty-seventh, and I swear I already reported on this, but we didn't. Um, we did talk about the main item, though remind me of the war, the policy that we adopted. What was it called? Cash something?
We're going to be adopting it here in a little bit.
Oh, it's, it's here.
We talked about it at the, uh, organization, not the, the, we talked about it at the work session.
Cash balance reserve.
Yeah, and, and it's the, it's on the agenda tonight.
Perfect.
Waiving the first and second readings for the adoption of the cash ba, cash balance policy.
So that Finance Committee meeting was the discussion and making the recommendation to the Board for this. Um, so you've already heard the crux of that meeting. So, and our next meeting is to be announced.
Correct.
That concludes my report.
Great. One more time, Policy Committee.
It's Hayley's turn. The next meeting's to be announced.
That concludes my report. Thank you. Facilities Committee.
Our next meeting is May eighteenth at six-thirty P M in the building. The Facilities Committee versus the Elementary Task Force.
Gotcha.
There's a lot of crossover, but the next meeting of the Facilities Committee is May eighteenth at six-thirty P M in this building.
All right, thank you. Business Advisory Council Committee, Haley.
We had a meeting on Friday, March tenth here. Uh, our business advisory partners and board members were broken into four different groups. We had resumes where students brought in their resumes and business partners reviewed them and gave feedback on do's and don'ts and resume best practices. There was mock interview where students participated in a mock interview with business partners, asking potential interview questions. There was the interview prep company research, and Sharon Kilbane was part of that group. The students, uh, had to understand the company and the many layers some companies have in terms of career functions. Business partners shared their best practices for company industry research and other prep topics students should partake in prior to an interview. And I was part of the Q and A section where the students came prepared to ask questions that they had on their minds as they think about their career interests and preparing for life beyond high school. Uh, they asked questions such as, when you were our age, did you know exactly what you want to do and were you correct with that? Did you go into exactly what you planned to do when you first went to college? And other questions where we got to be completely honest and say, no, when we were your age in eleventh grade, we had not pinpointed what we were going to do with the rest of our lives. And I think that made them feel a little bit better in terms of they don't have to have it all figured out right now, but it's interesting and good that they're motivated and wanting to. And our next meeting is going to be Friday, April twenty-first at seven-thirty A M. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Superintendent's Timely Information.
Thank you. Just a couple of updates I wanted to share in terms of the different levels of the building. So first of all, just wanted to highlight Mrs. Lewis, one of our, or the media specialists at the elementary level, uh, who's been working with our kids and researching different projects. So using a, a variety of books in the media center or online tools to put together, uh, some Google Slideshows uh, and, and putting their tech skills into practice. Uh, and so they've been able to share those animal presentations with their other classmates. So appreciate her and her work, uh, to build those skills and apply them, uh, with our students. Uh, at the middle school level, I think it was last week, uh, just an outstanding experience. Um, so, uh, Mrs. McKnight and our, our middle school English Language Arts teachers brought in Helen Marks, who was a survivor of the Holocaust, uh, as a very young person, um, and shared her story uh, about, uh, you know, having to be hidden away in a variety of countries and, and, and the, the trials and tribulations they went through, uh, throughout the war. Um, so just, I was able to spend a, a chunk of that time listening to her remarks. So what an outstanding firsthand experience for our students to, to learn the content in the classroom, but to hear a survivor, uh, come and tell her story, and a powerful story it was. And, and I believe she is in her early nineties, um, but you couldn't tell at all that, that she, I, I think somebody said she was ninety-two-ish, maybe somewhere around there. So just a, a phenomenal, uh, job sharing her story and some really powerful messages for our middle school students. Uh, and I have a chance to have a Q and A with her and, and talk a little bit about it. And then finally, at the high school, yes, it is March Madness time. My pool bracket is officially done. Uh, but, uh, they have a biology, uh, March Mammal Madness, uh, where it is, it is actually, Mr. Mott, as you can see, is very excited state. I think this is his Super Bowl, right, this March Madness, uh, but there is actually- But there is actually, you know, some science behind this, that they build brackets of different animals to see how the different animals compete and who would win. So taking the spirit of March Madness, which is fun for a lot, applying it to biology, looking at the variety of features of animals, and then determining who would be the winners in a face-off. So it'll be exciting to see how the animals move, and this is right outside, usually right outside the media center in the high school. So if you're by, take a look, and you can see how the animals are progressing. And then finally, what a wonderful theater program we have, Mr. Jenkins and all of our supporting folks that help from the music to the choreography, to the acting. It's coming up next week, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Bye Bye Birdie, this is one of his areas of focus, is to do a classical musical for kids to understand that aspect of the theater program. So 7:00 PM at the high school on those dates. You have to get tickets online, and $10 for adults, $7 for kids and seniors. And so just go to Strongsville Athletics, click on Tickets. That's through our ticketing app that we use for other services as well to get your tickets and enjoy a phenomenal night of entertainment and theater from our very talented students. So with that, that concludes the timely information.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Board Policy. It's our third reading. We waived the first and second readings of the Cash Balance Reserve. We've touched base on that a little bit. That's a procedural item. Next, Board of Education.
That's a vote.
I don't know why it says procedural, but you still have to vote on it, yeah.
The procedure is we have to vote.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mr. Miko. George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we can go to Board of Education, other miscellaneous. Do we have any miscellaneous items? Hearing nine?
I have one.
All right.
I was just going to give a shout out to the Early Learning Preschool PTA. Back on Monday, March 20th, they had a kickoff event for their Kindness is Magic, and it was storytime and a snack, and there were a lot of what they called kindness crafts. And so the concept is, some people might think we're inundated with cookie dough fundraisers. I'm conflicted on that. I like cookie dough, but I can understand having the, having too much cookie dough. But the idea is that you can support the Strongsville Early Learning Preschool PTA, and your contributions, the students do different acts of kindness in return. And so some of the things they did was they did cards, greeting cards for some of the elderly, am I allowed to say that anymore? Some of the elderly in the community in those kinds of activities. So it was really nice, and so I wanted to give a shout out, not just because the event was Monday, March 20th, but the Kindness is Magic is going to be a month or two-month-long activity, so there'll be other opportunities. I kind of look at it like I'm buying kindness, and if I can buy something and it's kindness, I'm willing to throw 20 bucks in the hat. So I recommend everyone else consider buying some kindness when the next events come forward. But it was a nice event, and I'm glad I went.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? Hearing none. Next, we have meeting notifications and date change. A regular Board of Education meeting work session will be held Thursday, April 6, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the meeting room of the Administration Building, 18199 Cook Avenue, Strongsville, Ohio. This is a change of date from April 14, 2023. We are changing the meeting due to spring break. A regular Board of Education meeting will be held Thursday, April 27, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the meeting room of the Administration Building, 18199 Cook Avenue, Strongsville, Ohio. Next, Executive Session. We do have need for Executive Session to discuss.
To prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, and to consider the employment of a public employee.
Do I have a motion? So moved. Second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mr. Miko. George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
We will enter into Executive Session at approximately 9:35. We don't see need to continue in public session after Executive Session is concluded, so please, everyone have a great night.